This is a meeting that we call-
The Prairie View City Council Meeting is now called to order.
Again, I was just trying to-
It is two seventeen. Ms. Bynum, would you please? Sertify the form.
Councilmember Roland.
Present.
Councilmember Randall. Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Wallace.
Thank you, ma'am. If we could stand for a brief invocation and pledge. Lord, please bless us as we do your bidding for all those who live, work, and study and visit the City of Prairie View. Please guide us in all of our undertakings so we may have an orderly, respectful meeting amongst each other. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we are here for a budget workshop to discuss the proposed two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty City of Prairie View revenue and expenditure budget. Uh, council, if you could update us based on how the meeting was posted as to more or less how the deliberation should go today. Is it council? Is it citizen input? What? It's not a public hearing?
This is a city council budget workshop meeting. It is not a public hearing.
Okay.
You know, if the city council chooses to have citizen comments, it's not a voted item on the agenda, but that's the freshman city council. But it is not a public hearing.
Okay, and one thing for the record that I want to state because our meetings have been getting, uh, Councilman Jones, please. A public meeting, everything that we say up here, they have to hear. That's the law. The Texas, I reviewed the Texas Attorney General Open Meetings Act handbook, and council, please correct me if I'm wrong, but section eight, see page thirty-nine speaks to there are no rights of the public to speak during a non-public council open meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, so I just want to say that because again, we've been liberal, but the liberal has gotten out of hand, so no mas, no more. Okay, it's okay to raise your hand, and if it's appropriate, the chair will recognize you based on the issue. But other than that, we're moving our meeting and we're keeping the decorum as it's supposed to be. Okay, uh, council, what's your pleasure, Councilman Jones?
Uh, just before we start the meeting, I'd like to say I apologize for my tardiness. Usually I don't show the way to me, but due to I had car problems, I wasn't able to be here in adequate enough time. So if you do know if you can, that'd be great to see face your expressions in the crowd. I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure, Governor, I'll show you. Councilwoman, Mr. Jones. Councilman Roland.
Glad that we could, um, uh, bring this meeting together. Hopefully, uh, we'll be able to, uh, look at the budget. I know we received some information from Mr. Johnson, so hopefully he has our, uh, the things that we asked for in the last budget, uh, meeting. Um, and so he could take us through page on page. So I look forward to it. Uh, thank you everybody for coming on the same day as you.
So, Mr. Johnson, you'll be picking up on the things that council requested?
Yeah, right. Exactly. Well, yes, we've, we've got some new, some additional pages to give you all. If you would, can you replace the pages I just gave you in your budget with what you currently have?
That's page nine and ten?
Yes. Page nine done is added officers' names to the positions. And page ten is a, an additional request from police department for equipment that they need. I would just make a quick addition.
Just, uh, Roland, I think we- I have a question. Um, where, where's the information that council requested in reference to the police department? Where is that paper?
What's, you requ- what?
We had a meeting, we had a meeting, and we, and we, and we had a majority that asked to see an additional option for the police department. And so where, where is that option?
I'm not sure. What, what was that option?
We, we asked, so when we first got this budget, um, there was any, there was a lot of items missing, um, in the police department.
Items that were missed before.
We went through how many police officers we currently had at the time. We then figured out how many open positions we had. Then we said, okay. We got the total on how much more we were going to spend in addition, in addition to officers in reference going to this new budget. Where is that information? Right here, what you're giving us is a, is a new, uh, updated version, but it's not the updated version that we asked to see. Now, this is, can it be in addition to, but where is what we asked for?
What you a- asked for was for the officer's position that we're not fielding. And I've mentioned it to you that the mayor was working on finding a way to field those officers. Those positions are now, you have the names that are fielded. Therefore.
Okay, Councilman Jones.
My question is how are the positions filled when we, I mean, usually we'll put it into the budget, we'll, we'll approve the budget, and then the officers will come on board. And what you're showing me is that these officers are already on board, have already been hired, have already been voted in by council.
I'm going to defer that to the mayor. What, what, what was given to you?
No, it's not right there.
Go ahead.
You defer it to me, let me pick it up.
Right.
Okay, these are, five of these are individuals who are in the hiring interviewing process. I think, uh, Councilman Jones, it may have been used because of the word I, I used. You asked me to clarify it. And it was the hiring, yeah, the hiring interviewing process. So in looking at it and having, uh, a couple of final interviews as recent as tomorrow, uh, we, we, uh, I'm choosing to let you see who we've got. I think I called him in the hopper. Who we're actually looking at finalizing, uh, in the beginning of our year. Now, keep in mind, at one time, we lost three officers at one time, just maybe a couple of months ago. So those are some positions that we're already free to fill. So it's really just the, uh, the additional ones, the effective October one, uh, once the budget is passed, that these other additional officers will be. Because we discussed the numbers of these officers at several of the prior meetings. Yes, sir?
And this was, because my, my goal is contingent, uh, based upon what we have with our police department. I don't think it's safe to say that, uh, we're experts, um, at hiring police officers, being that we don't have a police chief and know the direction in which our police department is going in. So I don't think it's fair for us as a council to, like, who? We're, uh, we're, us not having our procedures in place. So may I ask what officers, um, on this list, uh, that currently works for our, uh, police department?
Sure. Officer White, Ross, Eagleton, Watson, Ben, Mosley, Rodriguez, and you can add Gray. He's not on here.
So will he be a new hire?
Yes, yeah, he's a replacement for one of the positions that we lost. So, yes, ma'am.
Again, I, I-
Yes, Councilman Roland?
With the true spirit of, uh, what this process is about. In our current budget, we have identified the police department. The names you put on here, it is, is in addition to those officers, which is again, the, the part where it gets a little gray. And so I, I, this will be the opportunity, um, to try to hear your process on how you got to this by increasing the number of officers, by go ahead and putting these down when they're currently not. So this is the budget piece. You are in a, you, you have not come back to council and said, hey, we are getting ready, you know, the goal after we opened, after October one, we plan to go through the hiring process and hire three or five additional officers. And then we say, okay, sure, go ahead. That, that's what we need to do. You're then come in and s- s- put in to some additional officers prior to this process, which t- which again, is not transparent both for the community and city council. And because we want to be on the same page, can you walk us through why you chose to do, go with the process you did when you're knowing we're currently in the budget process to try to, for us to all be on the same page and work together? Because what you, what you continue to do-
You want me to answer that?
Well, yeah, yes, well, I want to-
You want to answer this?
Yeah, but you, you continue to circumvent the process and then act like you don't know what's going on. So I, I, I would, I would, I'm asking, can you tell us about your process and then what, what part of that process is transparent for the community and for city council? Yes, sir.
Okay, well, first, let me correct one thing. You've never seen me sit up here and even imply that I don't know what's going on, because that's a big misstatement. Mr. Johnson, when was the first time that you shared in our budget process of what approximately a month or so with several meetings? And during council meetings, when was the first time after our initial discussions on preparing the budget, which is the major's job, mayor's job to present to the council? From our meetings, how many police officer slots did we have in total?
Eleven.
Okay, so for at least five weeks, maybe it's Councilman Roland who's saying he doesn't know what's going on. Because for five weeks, you've been looking at the minimum of eleven slots in the police department, and you chose today, I assume because you see names in there for the first time, because they haven't been names in there even though we had six officers. But it came up even at the most recent meeting that we had six officers on board and that we were looking to add an additional five. Those five were blank at the time, but you were on notice back then and since we started the budget process that we were looking to add using the additional revenue that, uh, we received, uh, four hundred and forty-one thousand or so dollars over last year to add and improve our police department because there have been several instances where officers were the only one on shift, something that's been going on in the city for some twenty-something years that I know of. But it's no longer safe. We've got a lot more people here, a lot more traffic here. And you've been on notice at least five weeks that there were eleven slots. So now, those additional officers, as I just shared with you, are not to start until the new budget is approved. But from the prior budget, we had some seven or eight officers-
At one time, you had eleven working, but they quit.
Right.
Because what came up was, can we afford these, they went from part-time to full-time. That's what happened. And, and then what came up in a council meeting was asked me, well, can we afford, I said, yes, you can afford it through the end of the year because the police department had been underfunded, so we had funds remaining. I said, but you will have to revisit this in the new year because you're looking at switching from part-time to full-time officers. Can you afford for your force?
And we're looking at revenue this year going forward that we didn't have the previous year, so increasing it makes economic and business and more importantly, safety sense. Councilman Roland?
Again, thank you for the explanation, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One of the, what I first asked for was the, the option that city council, the majority of city council asked you to provide to us, which was the same, goes back to my question. We, we asked, you, we had, there was eleven that you had budgeted, but we, at the time, we didn't have eleven. We wanted to see what the number is of current officers and how much we were spending, and then have the remaining officers in a separate section. That's the option that we asked to see for the police department. And so to be clear, yes, we knew about what we first got and we didn't like what we saw. That's why we asked for an additional recommendation. What I'm seeing here is the recommendation that city council gave back to the mayor and Mr. Johnson was, was disregarded because we don't have it in front of us for what we asked for. And so that's fine, but just again, when we had our budget meeting before, we went through items, we identified how many officers we had. We went through positions, we went through pay. And then we asked to see just a snapshot of current officers, and then we asked to see, well, if we put the, put the officers, the new officers that we don't have in a pool and wait to hire a chief, and then now the chief had so many officers that were coming in, and we have a chief, because remember, the chief process is ongoing and supposed to be wrapping up right now. So we would, so we would have the chief coming in and the, the police officers identified in the budget. So again, I'm asking for what we asked you to provide to us, when are we going to get that?
Okay, I can give it to you right now.
Okay.
The amount is a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. It's three officers, Anthony, Garner, and Jenkins toward the bottom. The other officer all on board.
And Gray.
No, Gray's already in existing budget.
Right, right now, uh, you asked me for the three, the three unfilled positions.
Yes, Anthony, Garner, and Jenkins.
The last three are unfilled. That's a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So that's what you, that's the answer you, 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 you had to answer me for.
All right, and, and, but how? So using this, this, uh, this sheet, which is provided to us, um, we have to add an additional slot to add Gray, so how is Gray?
Now, Gray, we're not going to add another officer on there. Gray would, would, would replace one of those other names that are on there.
Officer White, we shared with you some two or three meetings ago. Councilman Roland, you may not have been here that day, but we talked about how, uh, in getting with Judge, the warrant process was not being handled at all for, uh, I don't know how long, but it's, it's a lot of business and activity over there that she needed help with. Officer White is currently the bailiff for municipal court. And he signs off after prepared the citations for ordinance violations. So Officer White is mistakenly listed as a patrolman. He is, he is not a patrolman. He is a warrant officer. We had that, I think, passed out. It was listed on one of the prior things. And again, you, you may not have been here. I know it says, I know, it says, I'll say he's mistakenly listed.
No, uh, let me make, let me just make clear. What we have here is the, the right number. Now, mayor, I have to say that if Gray is not replacing one of these, Gray is an addition, and we don't have a position for an addition.
Okay, hold it, hold up. How many slots for police officers do we start the current budget cycle with? How many slots?
Exactly what you see here.
No, no, give me a number.
Okay, let me count.
How many numbers?
Now, counting the chief, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
At the beginning of this year, and I'm not talking about the one that hadn't started.
No, no, what we have budgeted right now is eleven slots.
He didn't change his schedule, actually, Mr. Mayor. This is what I'm saying. All right, so because the others have not started and Gray has? When, I hired him. That's how he started. Hold on. He just told you about the money in the budget. What, one of the things that, um, council may not be as aware of, especially with PD, because it's kind of different. When you've got an officer who's finishing up a shift and is involved in whatever it takes to write a report, et cetera, all of that kicks into comp time and work time, all paid at time and a half. In getting with Mr. Johnson and, uh, when he was interim chief, interim chief Ross, we realized that we were paying for extra officers. We just didn't have them. So when someone, when Eagleton went out for this foot surgery, or when White went on his vacation, these are things y'all may not monitor or be aware of. Someone has to cover that time, and at time and a half, it costs us more than it would if we hired someone. But Mr. Johnson just shared with you that we had how many officers working full-time?
Right now, mayor, we have eleven slots budgeted.
Okay, so we have eleven slots budgeted, and when you count them without the new ones, I count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, including Gray. Tell me where my math is wrong.
No, okay, Gray would have to replace either Anthony, Garner, or Jenkins.
No, Anthony, Garner, and Jenkins is not on yet.
I know, but I'm just saying.
Okay, then I'm okay with that. They haven't started.
Right, exactly.
What I'm saying is, we have seven people working. I gave you these because they're in the hiring process and to keep the public and council fully informed, which I'm required to do by charter.
Okay, go ahead.
If I have names in a process going, on one hand, they say I don't tell them. When I do tell them, they say there's something wrong with it. Well, now you've been told.
Okay, then.
Yes?
In the process, I mean, Mr. JJ, John, Mr. Johnson just told you, how, how you even get to your process is unclear. But hey, you have a process of three people. He's saying right now, you have, we have, we're looking at more people than we have budgeted on this sheet, and you're trying to work your way around it. He's saying out of the three slots that you're saying you're trying to fill, we really only have two if Gray is coming on. And this is part, and this is part of what we're saying about communication. Your process is your process. That's fine, but we're saying that you included Gray, and then Gray ain't even on this sheet, which means that's an additional cost to the police department. What we're trying to say is that, that's saying now, instead of the three open slots that will come up October one, we only have two. Now, we still want to talk about your process and how you even started to have process to have three police officers, but that's another conversation. And what we're talking about right now, we're just trying to be open and transparent and figure out how do we work together. Right now, we're saying if we had, we, you saying, we, right now, the bu- uh, Mr. Johnson said we have three. Right now, we really only have two open slots. Council, at the beginning, when we first started this budget process, we had more open slots. And so we would have liked to be connected in this whole process, and so currently, right now, with the changes that had just been made, if we add Gray, what is Gray, what category is Gray falling in and how much is he making? So we can go ahead and do this right now, whether it be Gray or we replace the name, we have to know how much they're making, because right now, we're over budget.
Hold on, hold on. He asked a question. Can you tell me where we're over budget right now?
No, all right.
Because Councilman Roland said we're-
I'm talking about in this new-
Hold on, I didn't interrupt you, Councilman. You said we're over budget. I just want to address your concern.
All right, if, if Gray, you said Gray has already been hired.
Yes.
Then Gray has to be added on here as existing patrolman. That leaves you two, two spots.
Okay, now, let me ask, let me ask you this, let me ask you this, because again, I like that those names are on here because that's a part of our transparency. I don't want to have them in my office, on my desk, and council don't know, and then they say you should have told us. Well, you, you know as I'm knowing. I'm interviewing, and we're doing backgrounds, and we're finalizing things, and we are trying to get the police in here that we need to keep our residents safe. So let me ask you this. Regarding the warrant officer, and in going with Judge, she spoke about the direct cause and effect of revenue generation in having a warrant officer. And she said it's already started and money's flowing in. So would that impact this budget from, where, where's that revenue showing up?
All right, let me tell you what the difference is right now. If you look at the revised page, there are two slots that don't have anything by them, and that's the chief and the sergeant detective. They don't have a- a- anyone by those. So if you're planning on moving one of these other patrolmen, these, all these, these new patrolmen to that detective slot, then that's where Gray would fit in as a patrolman. So that, I don't know what's the strategy here.
We're looking at that.
So if that's the strategy, then Gray, then you, you, you still would have three positions open. Okay, so you-
How much is Gray? Uh, the starting officer salary, whatever it is, high forties?
We have, I don't know the specific, I'm not looking at it.
There's like four different salaries for patrolmen, so what is also with that issue?
Okay, well, let me answer that. The, the patrolman starts with a base salary, I think it's like forty-seven. But Chief Solomon informed us that typically departments add based on certifications, different trainings, things like that. That's why brand new, and, and of course, experience, so they're just coming out of the academy, have they been working somewhere else, things like that. So that's why you'll, you'll probably never see, unless you have two officers coming straight out of the academy with zero additional certifications, that's probably the only time you'll see both of them making the exact same money. So I would have to get with, because I haven't looked at all of the certifications. But I know we started, Ms. Bynum, uh, if you could assist me, we started Officer Gray with the basic starting salary for our police department. Am I right?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure. I didn't do his-
Oh, because I did, that's right. We went through, uh, the treasurer and the, uh, the bookkeeper who does payroll had those numbers. But we can get those to you, but it is whatever the, our base starting salary and whatever additions based on licenses, Councilman Jones? Sorry about that.
All right, so out of the three documents that we have, uh, here, pointing back, uh, so when we first started our budget cycle, at one point, we was told that we only had six officers. And now we've been told that basically we have, that we have seven. And so my, my, my thing is, mayor, when we talk about transparency and then open, uh, how we didn't know until now that we're going into the budget process, that we had an additional officer.
He just started Friday. It was, I think Friday or Thursday, worst case was his first day, so I think it was Friday. And that, that conversation came up a week or so ago. He just started.
Okay, and then also, where's this money been forwarded from? If going into our new budget, well, I guess you just answered that, that one of the patrolman officers would have to move up to, uh,
Yeah, well, the one that just started would still be under the current budget. He is a replacement for one of the people who, who left the, left the city. So he's on, he, he, when he started, he's under the current budget, uh, until the end of this month. And right now, what y'all are discussing now is the new budget that starts in October. And so again, the, the same scenario holds place in that you, you, uh, right now, what you're trying to agree on is a police department where you increase from part-time to full-time for the full staff. And so the question now is the number, and what budgeted here is the number. You don't have, you currently don't have three, but you, but the mayor had just mentioned to us that he has this other person, Gray. And if the, if the plan is to take one of these, the current staff, and move one of them up to sergeant detective, then that'll leave the other three slots. Plus, you still need to hire a chief.
Yeah, now, let me ask you a question. Regarding, what is the difference, as it sits right here now, and, and I want to include the chief and the detective, and literally, all these names on here? Okay? What would that ballpark total be in additional revenue over last year? In other words, October one, if all these were filled with current names, and I think it's a part of what Councilman Roland asked, what is the additional revenue in next year over this year?
You want to know revenue or cost? Revenue?
Cost.
Cost, well-
Yeah, because we can't discuss the revenue.
The total issue, if you look at the total on page nine, it's six hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred.
Okay.
Last year, it was like five thousand. I mean, the total, la- last year's police total.
Right. Yes, Councilman Roland?
Oh, I, I, it's right here.
Um, so, uh, I, I, I just want to be transparent for the community. Last year, we approved the budget with eight full-time-
Last year, we approved the budget with eight full-time peo- full-time officers. We approved eight full-time officers. Ending the budget, we had one, two, three, four, five part-time officers. So, up to thirteen officers between full-time and part-time. What we've done is we flipped some of these officers, and now we're proposing eleven full-time officers. We had eight last year.
We had eight budgeted, yes.
We, we had eight budgeted, and it, and we actually put in the budget more than eight. Because again, we were trying to be, we had an additional full-time officer, which made it nine, and we had four part-time officers. And so, I'm, I'm looking at it right here. And so, what I'm saying is, we tried to be fair in the process, in the budgeting process from what the mayor gave us. We tried to build the police department, give them the support they needed. Have you looked at this budget, Mr. Mayor, and then with the new budget flipping everyone from part-time to full-time, and then you're saying you need more people? That's, that's spending more money. And so, I, I, I'm, I, I don't want us to sit here and try to frighten the community about we need all this crime and stuff like this. We have year after year increased officers in the police department. We, we had eight last year, full-time. And then we had an additional one and four part-time for the budget we finally approved. And so, I'm still trying to figure out how we move these part-time officers to full-time officers, which was not in the budget.
Okay, let me answer that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We had three officers who were, for whatever reason, because we weren't given the particulars, we were forced to let go Officer Garrett, Officer Phillips, and Officer Crocker, because the Waller County District Attorney sent us a memo to me in my capacity stating that they would no longer accept cases from them. We lost those three. Prior to that, another Officer Ingram went to another department for a better position. That's four of the eight that you say we had. So.
Oh, no. They took, uh, uh, three of them, that's what I'm saying. Only one was full-time was Gary.
Officer Phillips was a full-time officer for a couple of years.
The other, the, two of those three came in part-time and didn't come, become full-time until two months ago when Officer Ross came in. So, like, again, we want to be transparent and just not throw out numbers. They came on as part-time officers. We had four.
That's right.
You made them two part-time officers, full-time officers, and so, it's, it was really only one full-time officer. Then he's, then Phillips came and he was a full-time officer.
Okay, let me, let me follow you. We had a lot, well, let me ask, let me ask you a question. How much overtime and comp time were the officers that we have receiving? Do you know?
How much full-time?